Okay, we're gonna call the meeting for Monday, September fifteenth to order. If we have a disaster for a fire, we're gonna go out this door. For tornado, we're gonna go out that door and head to the basement. Roll call of Alderperson. Shelley?
Alderperson Whitaker.
Here.
Alderperson Schneider.
Here.
Alderperson Duco.
Here.
Alderperson Dowling Urban.
Present.
Alderperson Randall.
Here.
Alderperson Ferguson.
Here.
Alderperson Anthony.
Here.
Alderperson Ovian.
Here.
Alderperson Diddleman.
Here.
Alderperson Kaiser. Alderperson Steele.
Here.
Alderperson Rothweiler.
Here.
Alderperson Elmore.
Here.
Alderperson Wiegat.
Here.
Alderperson Sullivan.
Here.
Alderperson Asgoff.
Here.
Uh, Kaiser's excused.
Okay, roll call Department heads?
City Treasurer Bearman.
Here.
City Attorney Coroner.
Right.
Police Chief Matt Iskam. Fire Chief Kurt Loge. Finance Director Jamie Matriot. Director of Public Works Jason Foal.
Here.
Director of Waste Water Brett Friedman.
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman.
Here.
Director of IT Ty Buckner.
Here.
City Engineer Scott Sager. Director of Health Housing and Buildings Scott Tyler.
Here.
Director of Grants and Special Projects Eric Schouster.
Here.
Director of Human Resources Bill Clay.
Right.
Director of Maintenance Mike Shaver.
Here.
Matt Iskam is excused. Lieutenant Colonel Heffernan is here in his place and Scott Sager is excused.
Okay, thanks. If you'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
As allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, just remind the Aldermen of we are removing items eleven G five and fifteen E from the agenda tonight for the email I sent out earlier. We do have a public hearing tonight, so we're gonna go ahead and open that public hearing up. It's regarding the annexation petition for parcel zero eight one four zero one zero three zero three five, eighteen oh one Lebanon Avenue, and zero eight one four zero one zero three zero zero five, twenty forty, twenty four thirty, Old Collinsville Road into the city of Bellevue. Eric?
Yeah, so we received an annexation petition, uh, which is coming for you tonight. Went to economic development last, earlier this month. You also have a annexation agreement coming for you for these properties. There was, uh, this is, uh, Ty's gonna pull them out for us. But these two properties are contiguous to the city on Lebanon Avenue. And, uh, so there's a proposed development for the, for the corner there. And that will, of course, go through planning commission and the site plan and everything, so we will see that actual development later on. But these are the, the two parcels and the roadway, portion of the roadway that will come in with the annexation. And then with the annexation agreement, you'll see later on that with that agreement, it would come in as C two heavy conversion.
If not, we'll open it up for public comment. If anybody has anything they wanna say, they can step up and speak two to three minutes on this topic. If you'll just state your name for us.
Hi, my name is Patrick Gall. I live, uh, we live, uh, we live next to our, next to the proposed, uh, Casey's gas station that's, that's there. We are adamantly opposed. Number one, property dying. I don't know what we can do to it. I'm sure, I'm sure they'll tank it. Uh, number two, uh, the corner is not designed for, uh, for this. If you have a, if you have an entrance off of Old Collinsville Road onto, into that gas station, uh, it's dangerous. You're gonna have somebody come flying across Lebanon Avenue and T-bone somebody coming into that gas station or get hit coming out of that gas station. Uh, the road is just too busy, especially in the mornings with high schoolers coming in and out of there. Number one, the next thing is the noise that it, that it will create. Uh, the, the light in, in the evening, you know, we're gonna have, we live in our backyards in the evenings. I think it's just a detriment to the neighborhood. Uh, the trash that the Circle K produces is unbelievable. And if you have another gas station, it's just gonna make it even worse. We're constantly picking up these beer cans and trash pizza boxes in our front yards, people walking through our yards throwing trash out. Um, it's just not a good idea. And I don't think that building another gas station helps at all. You just don't need it, so.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anybody else for the public hearing? Stuart, you're here for the, you're talking about the public hearing? Well, no, the public participation is after the public hearing. This is specific to the annexation. Okay. Anybody else for the annexation?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't know what was going on. My name's Rick Brown, six twenty-four South Pennsylvania Avenue, Bellevue. I didn't know what was going on with it. I just, I was here for something else. But, uh, the people that are putting in this gas station, I don't know if they know what's gonna happen, but their taxes are gonna go up from six point seven one eight nine to eight point four five three seven. That's like twenty-four percent real estate taxes. Our taxes are high enough outside built in Bellevue. It's not taxed at eighty-six hundred dollars. And one of the reasons for that is because Bellevue's population is dropping. And there's less people to pay the taxes, so we get to pay more. Aren't we lucky? You know, I got other stuff to say about that, the next thing, but this is, uh, I don't think these people that come into town know what's waiting for. They can't hire their own electricians? No, 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 they gotta hire your boys that you approve of. Plumbers? Oh, no. They can't hire just any plumber, not even any licensed plumber from anywhere. Oh, they gotta hire your guys. This is what's destroyed the town. And when you look on the internet, anything about this town? All they talk about, racism, uh, sixty minutes, twenty twenty sixty minutes and nineteen ninety-three sixty minutes. You're running our population out of town. And as a resident of this town, I'm sick and tired of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for the public hearing? Hearing none? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at seven oh seven. And we will open up for public participation, two to three minutes. Please state your name. Stuart?
Stuart Leonard, Bellevue, Illinois. I got numerous comments. Uh, I'm opposed to the cemetery, uh, solar farm. That don't even make any economic or any kind of sense whatsoever. Anybody's actually looked, went down there, anybody that ain't went down there and looked it over should not have anything to say about it. And twenty-ninth and Godfrey, people are running the stop sign all the time. And there's young kids living in that neighborhood. And, uh, the Eighth Amendment of the Constitution says no excessive bond or bail. Well, that idiotic judge in St. Clark County come in and waving two pieces of papers and like some kinda deranged idiot and said, "You got a lot of nerve coming in or what in your mind reduced when you write these two letters?" I don't know what the hell he was talking about. And let's see here. Whoop. Sorry. Okay, uh, how come the flags are not at half-mast up on the square? I'm asking a question. Is that too difficult?
I don't know.
Huh?
I don't know, sir.
Well, I think they oughta be put at my half mast. The trailer park where my girlfriend lives, they put their flag at half mast. In honor of Charlie Kirk that was gunned down by some deranged right, uh, left-wing idiot, I think it is, uh, and then I was watching TV and these big-time Democrats are calling President Trump and anybody that disagrees with him Nazis and Hitler. And Schumer, when he was talking about President Trump, he says, "That thing in the White House." That's what he called President Trump. "That thing in the White House." And okay.
Do you have something to say about Bellevue, Stuart?
This is all, uh, this is one country. We're on one country. Everything that pertains to the country also pertains to Bellevue.
Okay.
Okay, I bothered you long enough.
Thanks, Stuart. Sir?
Robert Shaffer, another Shaffer, uh, same, same spelling. And I don't know, but flesh just out to make it for three minutes. But first of all, let's say the sanitation department's doing a great job. They pick up my trash. No problems there. They're always there on time to clean up the mess. But, uh, there's always, but I noticed that my neighbor behind me who's having financial problems, I had noticed he wasn't putting out his trash. And I told him to find out and it's because his trash can missing on wheels. It's broken. It's missing a wheel. It's missing a, a lid. And I said, "Well, just request another one. They'll, they'll be bringing it out in short time." He said, "Well, I tried that." And I said, "Well, 'cause I owe them money, they're not gonna do it until I get squared away." And I understand the city's position on that. I mean, but however, he says, "A wife and four kids, and their trash is still, is not gonna stop." And I went over there and looked and he's got more trash. It looks like he had to put it out in a couple of weeks. And so without a lid, it's just attracting vermin. And I'm, I'm the neighbor across the alley and they're gonna come my way and the other way's the way. So I want the city to reconsider their position on this. The trash and garbage doesn't stop. Now, in the meantime, I took his garbage, put it in my trash can, stuffed it in there. And we, our neighborhood has a, can a roving extra trash can for anybody that needs a second one. So we got that to him. He put the remainder of his trash in there, so it's taken care of for the short term. But it occurs to me, we may wanna take a look at this position of not providing more trash cans. The trash still occurs and it's gotta go somewhere into rental property. So I can imagine his next step would just be, uh, fill up his garage with it. That was so, please take a look at this. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I was coming here originally, oh, I'm Rick Brown, six twenty-four South Pennsylvania Avenue, Bellevue. Uh, coming here about eleven G five, which was removed from the schedule connect. This was moved from the schedule because I called Eric today, told him it was illegal. You have an ordinance that allows undersized lots to be built on without a variance. You all know that. Garrett knows it. The Assistant City Attorney knows it. All the people on the Planning Commission knows it, on the, on the Zoning Board of Appeals. They all know that. How many people is that? Maybe twenty, twenty-five people? Yet you did it anyway. You knew it was wrong. This is about the sixth, fifth or sixth time that I've caught you guys doing this. And you had to go back and refund the money to the people. You owe an apology too. You know? This is, you, you know, you're, you're preying on the very, I don't even know how, the very people, your constituents. You either take money from them, you steal their ground, or you, or you, or you commit other acts, mostly, uh, against African-Americans here in Bellevue. The, the housing, which you, guys did, and it's not many of you, this was a few years ago too, but you destroyed this town with your zoning ordinances. And now I hear you're gonna be writing another one. If you do, I'm gonna be part of it. Because I know where the bad stuff is. And as far as you, Garrett, you know, you, you, all this stuff is fine. I think it's a conspiracy because there's so many of you doing the same thing. Either rezoning properties out of existence or you, or you make them a non-conforming use. You know what that does for people, people trying to get a loan on a piece of property? Guess what? You either don't get it or you pay twelve percent. Because it's a risk to the landlord. You've done this all over town. You wanna know why people don't come here? You wanna know why businesses don't come here? All you gotta do is get on the internet. And there's hundreds and hundreds of sites. In fact, you have to do something really cute. Get on like one of those AI things and start asking questions that you know answers to, to that. And it'll tell you all the information. Nobody will wanna come here and live, much less build a business here. You're taxing them to death. You steal from them. You steal their property and their money, like with this case here. I don't know how many hundreds of dollars they had to shell out and you're giving them back. But what about the month or two that it took for them to get to tonight? This city is a mess. And I'll tell you what, sometime in the next few months, I'm gonna take a little trip to DC. I'm gonna go to the Justice Department. You know what? I've got a whole lot of stuff on this city. And I wanna make sure that somebody in the Trump Justice Department comes down here and fixes you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anybody else for public participation? Hearing none? All right, we're gonna move on to presentations, recognitions, and appointments. We do have a proclamation and recognition of Constitution Week. I believe we have some representatives here.
Okay, so, um, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, March the two-hundred-and-thirty-eighth anniversary of the Constitution of the United States by the Constitutional Convention, and it is being approved to report official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occupation. And public law on line fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation issued here by the President of the United States, designating September seventeenth to September twenty-third as Constitution Week. And this year marks the seventieth anniversary of the celebration of Constitution Week. And it is important that our citizens be asked to reaffirm the ideas the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilante protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Therefore, the city of Bellevue does proclaim the week September seventeenth to September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, as Constitution in the city of Bellevue.
And we also have a proclamation that we did in recognition of C-Track's Think Train Week that we've shared with that company. Um, I do need a motion now to, for the appointment of Mark Beckberg Lindsey to serve on the Crime Free Housing Committee.
Asgoff. Schneider.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call. Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Dowling Urban.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiegat.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Asgoff.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve city council meeting and executive session minutes of September second, twenty twenty-five.
Ferguson.
Schneider.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Claims, payroll, and disbursements. I need a motion to approve claims and disbursements in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-four cents, and payroll in the amount of one million thirty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighteen cents.
Whitaker, Sullivan.
Ferguson.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call. Schneider.
Yes.
Duco.
Aye.
Dowling Urban.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiegat.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Asgoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Um, under reports, I need a motion to approve the treasurer's reports of June and July twenty twenty-five, and statement of cash and investments reports for June and July twenty twenty-five.
Rothweiler.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Okay, oral reports from standing committees. Um, motion from Board of Fire and Police Commission. I need a motion to approve the promotions of Detective Tyler Schwartz and Officer Ron Funk to Sergeant effective September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five at twelve oh one AM.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
And motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call. Duco.
Aye.
Dowling Urban.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiegat.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Asgoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Lieutenant Colonel, you wanna introduce Schwartz and Funk?
Evening, everyone. My pleasure to introduce the two newest sergeants on the Bellevue Police Department. First of all, Tyler Schwartz. He's currently, well, you were assigned, to the auto theft task force. He's been on the department eight years. And he's been a field training officer and assigned to the patrol division. Uh, he will be a patrol sergeant on the night shift. Uh, Ron Funk, he's been on the department twenty years. He's a former auto theft investigator, former, uh, member of the special response team. He's our go-to field training officer and, uh, he's been assigned to the patrol division. He also will go to night shift as a sergeant. So these guys are both well-deserving of this and we're excited for them to take leadership roles in our department. So congratulations, guys.
Okay, thank you for that. We're gonna move on to motions from Streets and Grades Committee. Alderperson Randall?
Thank you, Mayor. Folks, any objection to reading these two together?
No.
Thank you so much. Eleven B one is a motion to approve Chris Brothers Asphalt Inc., the lowest responsible bidder for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six motor fuel tax TIF asphalt patch program in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty cents. And eleven B two, motion to, uh, from Public Works to dispose, sell, auction a two thousand and seventeen Timco five hundred and fifty X sweeper, VIN number ending in four six six nine one. So moved.
Seconded. Seconded and discussion? Oh, I mean, sorry, a motion and second. Any discussion? Roll call. Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiegat.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Asgoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Dowling Urban.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, Alderperson Whitaker, motion from Finance.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I'll make a motion that we approve bank financing from Bucy Bank at three point six nine three percent interest for financing of one new automated side loader sanitation truck. So moved.
Ferguson.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call. Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiegat.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Asgoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Dowling Urban.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderperson Elmore, motion from Traffic.
Eleven D one, motion to approve the electrical work rate in the amount of twenty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and three cents. Fifty percent will be reversed by St. Clark County Transit for pedestrian safety enhancements of East Main Street and MetroLink by the intersection of East B Street and MetroLink by Link. These will be paid out at fifteen bucks. So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call. Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiegat.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Asgoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Dowling Urban.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Alderperson Sullivan, Master Sewer.
I make a motion to approve four hundred thousand dollars addition, additional funding for the core of engineer phase one and two of East Creek sewer separation project.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call. Ovian.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiegat.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Asgoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Dowling Urban.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Um, Alderperson Diddleman, would you like to read the motions from Parks and Recreation Board?
Sure. Uh, can I read the three of them together?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, for the Parks and Recreation Board, I'd like to make a motion on F, or eleven F one, motion to approve Hank's Excavating and Landscaping Incorporated, lowest responsible bidder in the amount of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and ten cents for Pleasant Hill and Lattimer Park. Improvement, TIF three. Eleven F two, motion to approve facility use agreement between City of Bellevue and the Rowdies Rugby Club for use of Lattimer Park, eleven oh five Musculia Avenue and J.C. Park, seven fifty West H Street. Soccer fields for five hundred dollars annually, October first, twenty twenty-five through September thirtieth, twenty thirty. Eleven F three, motion to approve facility use agreement between the City of Bellevue and the Bellevue District, one eighteen, for use of the school facility for Parks and Recreation Programs, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Steele, second. Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call. Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiegat.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Asgoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Dowling Urban.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, motion from Zoning Board of Appeals. Shelley, do you want to read them?
I can do them. I'll do them.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you guys okay with me reading them together?
Yes.
All right. Eleven G one, fifteen, June twenty twenty-five, Mozam Kareem, request for special use permit for class C one liquor license at twenty-seven oh nine West Main Street, parcel zero eight two zero zero two zero four zero zero one and zero zero two, located in a C two heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point two four eight, one six two point five one five, Ward two. Eleven G two, nineteenth, July twenty twenty-five, David O. Shane, request for a special use permit
request for a special use permit to operate a bar tavern and a cla, and a class A two liquor license at fifteen oh one West Main Street, parcel zero eight, two one, zero, three, two, three, zero, one, seven, located in a C two heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the city code one six two point two four eight, one six two point five one five, Ward two. Eleven G three, twenty-two, August, twenty twenty-five, Sal Marquez Cruz, request for a special use permit, a class A two liquor license at fifteen fifty, East State Route fifteen, parcel number one three zero one, zero four zero zero, zero three zero, located in a C four commercial district, applicable sections of the city code one six two point two seven eight, one six two point five one five, Ward six. Eleven G six, twenty-third of August, twenty twenty-five, Bernard and Brandy Makin, request for special use permit to operate a short-term air, short-term rental Airbnb at two thirteen Columbus Drive, parcel zero eight, one seven, zero two, zero four, zero two six, located in a A one single-family residence district, applicable sections of the city and zoning code thirty-four point zero four three, one five four point one five, one five four point four six, one five four point four nine, one six two point zero nine four, one six two point five one five, Ward three. Eleven G six, twenty-five, August twen, twenty-five, August twenty twenty-five, Kendra Fairman, request for our use variance to allow for an in-home daycare for more than three children at sixteen eleven LaSalle Street, parcel number zero eight, one five point zero four, two three, zero eight two, located in a A one single-family residence district, applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point zero nine three, one six two point five seven zero, Ward one.
Sullivan, so moved.
Very good.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, Alder Person, Astor, motions from Economic Development and Annexation?
Does anybody have a problem reading them together?
No.
On behalf of Economic Development and Annexation Committee, I make a motion, eleven H one, motion to approve an annexation agreement with Lee D. Johnson and Christine E. Johnson, trustees for twenty-four thirty Old Collinsville Road, parcel zero eight dash one four dot zero dash one zero three dash zero zero five, and eighteen oh one Lebanon Avenue, parcel zero eight dash one four point zero dash one zero three dash zero three five. Eleven H two, motion to approve an annexation petition from Lee D. Johnson and Christine E. Johnson, trustees for twenty-four thirty Old Collinsville Road, parcel zero eight dash one four point zero dash one zero three dash zero zero five, and eighteen oh one Lebanon Avenue, parcel zero eight dash one four point zero dash zero, one, zero three dash zero three five. So moved.
Whitaker, second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have discussion. If you'd please do a roll call vote if you don't mind when it comes to.
It would be a roll call vote.
Listening to the residents, I completely understand where they're coming from. If you wanna see what a Casey's does to a neighborhood, you just drive down to Bar Boulevard. It's, it's bad. It's really, really bad. That intersection is extremely crowded. It's bad. We have turned down requests like this before on the south edge of town, South Illinois. There was a Dollar Tree, I think it was, or Dollar General, wanted to go right up against the intersection subdivision. And I, I know we can't always do what the public wants us to do. We have to do what is right. And I empathize with the resident here, Mr. Dahl. It is going to directly affect him. Now, this doesn't say anything, his motion's about, and maybe I need to read him closer, that this is for a Casey's, so that I have a question, is this specifically for Casey's? I don't know.
I don't believe the, at this point, we're just dealing with the annexation.
Okay.
That is all we're dealing with at this point.
And, and I think it would be, I think it would be really bad. Go ahead.
All right. But, yes, sir?
Speaking reference to Ward where this would be coming in, it is a commercial intersection. This is the one vacant corner of that commercial intersection that's not currently in the city. It would be an asset to bring a sales tax generating business into our Ward. We don't have many of them in Ward one, and I would highly support annexing this property for a commercial purpose.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. Roll call? Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
No.
Wa, Waga?
No.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Astor?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Dowling Urban?
Aye.
Randall?
No.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
No.
Dillman?
No.
Steele?
No.
Nine to six. In favor?
Yep.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. Communications, Shelley?
Okay, we just have one. Twelve A, Downtown Belleville, Witch's Brew Walk, ten sixteen, twenty twenty-five. Request from venue on Main, to downtown Belleville, Witch's Brew Walk, Thursday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, four PM to eleven PM. Street closure request, South Second Street, from West Main Street to parking lot, additional city services, barricades, no parking signage, picnic tables, and trash containers.
Need a motion?
Astor.
Second?
Duco.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We have no petitions tonight. I need a motion to read by title only, Resolution thirty-five fifty-one, thirty-five fifty-two, and thirty-five fifty-three. Duco. Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries. Shelley?
Okay, can I read them together?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Resolution thirty-five fifty-one, a resolution authorizing bank loan for a sanitation truck. Fourteen B, Resolution thirty-five fifty-two, a resolution of authorization for the City of Belleville's application of the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, IDNR, for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, open space land acquisition and development, OS-LAD grant funding. Resolution, fourteen C, Resolution thirty-five fifty-three, a resolution approving and authorizing financial commitment in the Illinois Safe Routes to School Program for the Royal Heights pedestrian upgrades.
I need a motion?
Anthony. Whitaker, second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call? Elmore?
Aye.
Waga?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Astor?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Dowling Urban?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I need a motion to read by title only, ordinances ninety-four seventeen, ninety-four eighteen, ninety-four nineteen, ninety-four twenty, ninety-four twenty-two, ninety-four twenty-three, ninety-four twenty-four, and ninety-four twenty-five.
The last one, Tom.
Okay, got a motion? Have a second?
Ferguson.
Could you separate fifteen G, please?
Any discussion? Fifteen G? Do you want me to do, I was actually gonna do G and H, 'cause they both.
Yes, please.
Were taken to that, yeah. So, but this is for the title only at the moment, so, no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, so Shelley, read them all but fifteen G and H.
Okay, got you. All right. Fifteen A, ordinance ninety-four seventeen, twenty twenty-five, a zoning ordinance in regards to case fifteen, June twenty-five, Mozam Karim. Fifteen B, ordinance ninety-four eighteen, twenty twenty-five, a zoning ordinance in regards to case nineteen, July twenty-five, David O'Shaney. Fifteen C, ordinance ninety-four nineteen, twenty twenty-five, a zoning ordinance in regards to case twenty-two, August twenty-five, Sal Marquez Cruz. Fifteen D, ordinance ninety-four twenty, twenty twenty-five, and ordinance in regards to case number twenty-three, August twenty-fifth, Bernard and Brandy Makin. Fifteen F, ordinance ninety-four twenty-two, twenty twenty-five, a zoning ordinance in regards to case twenty-five, August twenty-five, Kendra Fairman. Fifteen G?
No, G and H, or something.
Oh, I. Fifteen I, ordinance ninety-four twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, and ordinance authorizing sale and conversion of personal property, twenty seventeen, Timco five fifty X sweeper VIN, one HTMMAAN, three HH seven four six six nine one, Public Works Department.
I need a motion?
So moved.
A motion and a second. Schneider and Anthony?
Got you.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call? Waga?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Astor?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Dowling Urban?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is, since it's the same subject matter, can we read ordinance ninety-four twenty-three and ninety-four twenty-four together? Are you really okay with that? Okay.
Okay. Fifteen G, ordinance ninety-four twenty-three, twenty twenty-five, and ordinance authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement with Lee D. Johnson and Christine E. Johnson, trustees. Fifteen H, ordinance ninety-four twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and ordinance annexing certain territory to the City of Belleville, Illinois.
Whitaker, so moved. Schneider.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call? Sullivan?
Aye.
Astor?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Dowling Urban?
Aye.
Randall?
No.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
No.
Dillman?
Aye.
Steele?
No.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
No.
Waga?
No.
Motion carries. Okay. We have no unfinished business under miscellaneous and new business, I need a motion to approve motor fuel claims in the amount of eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Rothweiler.
Duco? Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call? Astor?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Dowling Urban?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Waga?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have no executive session. I need a motion to adjourn?
Randall, so moved.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.